All right. The minutes from the April 19th, 2024 meeting have been printed, posted and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? And no objections and a minutes will stand approved as posted. So we move on today to unfinished business. The water quality testing results are in your packet. The results continue to be as good as they possibly can be. And so we're way, way ahead of the curve as far as a lot of cities around us. And so I'm very pleased about that. And we continue to monitor them every month. Are there any questions on the water quality results? All right. Second item is the ARP discussion. We still have the money in our budget for the ARP funds. Once those projects are scheduled, then we will use that money to pay for the bulk of them. But all the ARP money is assigned to projects now. So there is no more ARP money up for grabs. The next item is our five-year plan. Does anyone have any additions to the five-year plan?
I want to talk about like even study that area.
So let's talk about that for a second. You know, the, the White Drive 10th Avenue area right there. I mean, even if we replaced the transite line on 10th Avenue going down there, how far will we have to go to get rid of the transite lines in that neighborhood? Yeah, I mean, the bulk of it's all transit, right? And I mean, when you start replacing them, let's say we decided, okay, we're going to do all 10th Avenue, which I don't know what that would be. So let's say it's 350 feet. All right. Mike, could you give us an estimate on what it would take to replace 350 feet of transite line?
Off of my head?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, no, no, no. I'm asking that because if, I mean, if we take this on as a future project, whether it be White Drive or 10th Avenue or the combination of both. what would it take to do that? I mean, that's, Craig's right. It all boils down to money. You want, is that what you want to look at? And make it a thousand feet, please. Forty-first to forty-sixth? Uh, okay. How deep is that? You know, the pictures that were enclosed in that packet, how deep is, how, how deep was the break on the last, last?
Yeah, I did. I didn't realize that's what that was, but.
I'll show you what is seen. Center is about, but even. Maybe underneath is what I want.
I'm sorry, say it again, Mike.
The water's under the, the sand area, and it's usually a known.
Oh.
Part of the problem. The end of. Service.
Amy, if you, if you would do that, then, you know, we'll see what options we have there. Okay. The dredging of the pond run and dry dams update.
Yeah. Going, we'll start next week. Twice a year. You have to be well aware this year. This year last year's. Very exciting with those. See the crew out. His feet put as fair as mine. Tickets, someone else. Train guys. Farm people. Beaters.
All right.
Design, we're just like, we're just making money.
Yeah, we are. All right. Mike, how about Twenty-Eighth Street Storm Grange Improvements Phase One Project Update?
Yeah. I guess it was yesterday. The city use plan for the next year came out as a draft. And I had sent stuff over. Greg, if you had a chance to, to look at it. You guys are on the list to receive up to a half million dollars in green infrastructure money. There's a few items that are a little different than what you'd have to do as far as it's just like any of the sewer projects, where you'd have to do a preliminary engineering reports, go to I G U C, tell how you don't get money back. But, you know, it's, it's a half million dollars that'd be taken off, so. But it's, it's, you're on the list right now. The plan will be finalized, it starts July first, so. Depending on how you guys wanna do that, or where, where the rest of the money would come. It, it could be a loan, as long as you, it could say where the payback's coming from. I'm not exactly sure how that would work. You know, if you don't have it in an enterprise fund. It's just gonna be general fund.
Phase one. I mean, you've already done all the work on, on that preliminary.
Yeah.
Estimates and what have you.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I don't remember the number. What is the number for phase one?
One, one point three six.
So a half million dollars, we go a long way on that one.
Yeah.
Okay. And I did get that letter yesterday, and those numbers, every one of those projects is listed. Okay, well, I think one eighty-nine and one ninety.
Yeah.
Listed in there, you know, but on the list, that's half the battle.
Yeah, just getting on the list is what you need, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Mike?
Just, I mean, I'm trying to understand this process. So we get granted five hundred thousand dollars is basically what you're saying, but then we have to be able to pay for the rest of the project to get it started. They're not gonna give us the money, but yet we sit here with no plan on where the rest of the money's gonna come from. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, either, you know, we have to say how you're gonna come up with it. Normally, like a sewer project, you know, you have your rates that will cover the additional, and that's where you have it. Or since this is not coming out of an enterprise fund, the general, I'm not exactly sure how that works. It's just kind of a different way to do it. I've never done one where it's just.
So you'd have to say, for example, capital reserve, right? Because this is storm water. Storm water doesn't flow in or necessarily a P S, a P S C rate structure. And so you would allocate, then, you would look at what storm water has now. You would possibly allocate more money from general fund towards that project, or from capital reserve for that project, or take out some sort of loan that could be paid back.
Okay, so this project.
But the payments would then be general fund.
Okay, so this project actually seems like something that's really doable because you're not constrained by the enterprise fund like darn water and sewer. And so basically, you know, I don't know what that is. My math is not real great today, but, you know, nine hundred thousand dollars basically, you know, to come out of however we want to do it, capital reserves or, you know, I mean, I know there's money, still a little bit of money in storm water, I think. I haven't looked for a while to see what that is, but. Okay, so that's halfway there, basically.
We have a hundred thousand getting ready also to go there.
Yeah.
So that will.
When the general fund budget kicks in.
So.
Okay.
It could be a combination of any of that.
Okay, so, well, that's very promising, because this actually seems like something we can get done, so. Thank you.
And I guess the only thing to, you know, we're not in a hurry because we want it to be next, ready to hit the road this time next year, because we want school to be hit out, so we can go up through there without impacting the school traffic.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
All right, so we move on to Wells Nine and Ten Rehab. Authorization to bid.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I gave Craig a set of plans for his review. As long as he's okay with them, I think we're ready to bid that project out. We've spent several months reviewing the project. Changes, revisions, scope. You know, I'm really trying to go through them. What like the stuff we talked through? Eighty. It's just, um, they could replace it in Wells, it's easy. Easy work, and get nearly inside that facility. So. Over there. I'll, I'll, I'll review it.
Okay, so rather than wait for another meeting, I mean, we're ready to move forward with this project. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve, uh, start the bid process, so we can get move on with this thing. All right? So I'll entertain a motion for the authorization to go ahead and advertise for bids on this.
So moved.
Second. So moving to the second, and we authorize project to move forward for authorizations to bid. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the authorization to bid the Wells rehabilitation, or Wells Nine and Ten, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously, okay?
Rid of that one.
Thank you. All right. The next item is the Skoda upgrade. Craig, I know you talked to that folks yesterday.
Yeah, they look at you. They promised they would be in here June the third. So Monday, June the third, so two weeks out.
Next item's the meter replacement project update.
We're doing real well on that. Maybe please get it running. The meter pops in there. On all one ten. Unfortunately, I think the issue. Lower things recently, so it's. When it goes bad, we're out of. Programs. We'll give them all. In our new division, we're on about three now. We can, it's in real well, guys, so we're working on, we got some other guys' time. Should go pretty quickly, if we can get in there at that time. Really, you can place the meter.
What percentage of the replacement meters have we received? We have a schedule for the delivery.
Received all of our large. It's our thing. One inch up, we have received, so guys, I'm replacing now.
And we have a delivery date for our deliver schedule, the rest of the meter?
Yeah. Three seconds.
Okay. All right, so we move on to new business then. First item is the review of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five water, sewer, and storm water budgets.
Yes, I had Lori load the budgets into your Dropbox. Also showing the last short budget report for each of these funds. The main changes in these budgets are Blue Cross Blue Shield. Health insurance went down seven percent this year. And it includes a pay increase for our employees that was passed probably a couple of months ago. I think it was the end of March, that pay increase was passed. And so that is reflected in these budgets. I had talked to Mr. Mets about putting any, if there were any capital equipment needs, and there were not at this time. So it's pretty much standard course. I looked at the short budget reports and adjusted a few of the accounts to basically cover how our spending is going at this time. Do you have any questions that you'd like for me to get answers to, or?
This will be on the next month's agenda for approval, so anything that we do has to be done by next meeting.
Too much in capital. Been real well on equipment. That's why I didn't ask for your addition. Same thing. Be gracious with what you hope. For the. Here, passing. Two. You know, if it, if it will happen this time. Yeah, I appreciate it anyway. Realize about health insurance.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's due to our wellness program, really has. Very several years ago, we started wellness program, check out. It's actually saved a few lives. I've heard anybody, any other work somewhere else where the, we're on. Will be definitely want to check out.
Saving money, saves money, saves lives.
It does. Visual work doesn't matter. Age issues. Wellness check. Under the big one.
Well, you know, I have a question. You just already knew that, didn't you? What do you anticipate on this budget for water and sewer, well, even storm water? Is there gonna be any money left over in the current budget that's gonna carry over? Or not, I mean, I know it just goes back into, stays in the fund, but.
It works a little different in the utilities than it does, for example, in general.
Okay.
Okay, because utility, general fund, for example, things like depreciation aren't taken at the fund level. A bit of an accounting lesson. Depreciation would be taken at what they call the citywide level. And so that doesn't hit like our expense accounts, okay? But what you don't generally see on a short budget report is the depreciation is an additional four hundred thousand dollars in expense that has to be covered each year. And so while cash flow wise, yes, there will be some money, because that's not necessarily cash out of your pocket.
Right.
But it is an expense, and on, and the utilities, the way they're set up, they, that expense hits at the fund level.
Okay, because I tried to, I did look at the short budget, but I was, I wanted to see the income side, because you posted them all, but they just had all the expenses, for whatever reason, the income didn't make it in there. No, I'm just, I'm sure it's just the way the report was run or whatever, and, and oversight, but, um, so I, for me, it was like.
I'll have Lori put it in.
Oh, I appreciate that, because it just kind of left me on a deficit trying to understand it. Because, I mean, these budgets are basically, you know, the same, they're flat. I mean, because we don't really anticipate any new income stream. I mean, you know, it's not, it's the same, and I know, obviously, on the payroll side, because there've been several raises, you know, that's happened, and we had a lot of breaks. I'm just curious of if there's ever any money left over, you know?
Cash in pocket, yes.
Yeah. And it's.
But, but you have to, you have to cover those expenses though also, so.
Okay, I make, that makes sense to me. I know what you're talking about. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? If you think of anything that Amy needs to look up to gather information for.
I'd be happy to get you any answers.
Please give her time, because it will, it will be on next month's agenda for the approval of these, because they have to be done. So. Anyway, Amy, thank you for your work.
I'll have Lori put that in first of the week.
And you're dismissed.
Went to a concert in Charleston. See ya.
She has a conference in Charleston, it's about water, sewer.
Amy Grant.
Amy.
Are you going to us?
Yes.
All right, so we move on. Water and wastewater system improvement project authorization of task order twenty twenty-four dash ten. Water system improvements, phase one preliminary engineering report. Mike? Or Craig?
I'll start off. We, we talked about it last year. I thought we were done. I was taking errors. Done, so wasn't, so the last one. Is done, this is for your projects. We have approval, get going. Should have done this. While I.
Don't feel bad, I thought it was done myself.
Yeah, I did, and it's.
Policy did it.
Everything talked about it. I could not believe we hadn't already done this, so hopefully all.
Any other discussion on task order number twenty twenty-four dash ten? Water system improvements, phase one, planning phase services?
I have a question. Because I'm looking at this from project cost from October sixth, twenty twenty-one, and I, I'm just not exactly clear of what is the phase one project? Does it just include the small diameter water main improvements, one through thirty-one?
Yes.
Okay, because on this, I just referenced this thing from October sixth. Uh, some of it, because obviously, we've done forty-six place, that's done. Wells Nine and Ten are already in the works. Twentieth Street Booster Station, that's gonna be. At this phase two. Okay, so. Okay, I know what you're talking about. Um, and then water main reinforcements, A through E, that's, I'm gonna be on phase two. Okay, so just the small diameter water. Okay.
Unless we do. Yeah. For what? We need to add that, man.
I, I have a question about water lines, it may not be related to this at all, but I was thinking about if everything goes through with the Board of Education, and they end up putting the consolidated school. end up putting the consolidated school out where the ballfields are, you know, in that complex, are we gonna have to have, um, we're gonna have to extend water lines, everything out there, I mean?
We have a tow, I have a water line.
Yeah. That was all my questions, that was it.
Okay. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion for the approval of task order number twenty twenty-four dash ten.
Seven.
Second. And moving second, and we approve task order number twenty twenty-four dash ten. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Mike, go to work.
I do.
All right. Uh, Craig, managers report, please.
I have a conflict. The next meeting is scheduled for June. I am out of town, uh, get appointments every Friday month, except. Either training or. We could move the meeting up. At twenty-first.
I have no issue with the twenty-first, but. I just need to make sure we get it. We can move it, if we have to move it, we'll move it again. Next meeting will be the June twenty-first, and it has to change, we'll have Lori go to work and scope it out. The fourteenth. Fourteenth, Hush cream special.
Yeah.
He's gonna bother one way or the other.
I'm just curious, I'm just trying to get it squared on the way in my mind, what day it was.
Is that on Friday?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're up today, y'all, we're, is there one I go tomorrow? We'll have eight pieces of equipment over tomorrow, then Lori will be over for rounds. So. Come over to see the guys. Really quick. Frank, you guys, Frank, you guys, where we got? The nephews, neighbors, kid out there. Want to enjoy the festivities. Big day for. Next week is Public Works Week. You all know about that, right? The event for Public Works.
Now, we all know about it, they, they saw the proclamation.
You guys have a first file up there. Does that, does that happen?
Good morning.
Uh, just let y'all know. Next Wednesday, uh, you don't, uh, always the people, uh, people hang out with, so invited festivities a lot. I am going to supply lunch for the guys. We stay at eleven thirty. Uh, we, those hamburgers, um, baked beans, I'm gonna be in. We're gonna have a little garage, uh, full of guys, they're gonna be. We're gonna grill, I'll supply the food, so please come up, help the guys, um, meet them, do none, talk to them, grab something to eat, out with them. Here, put it to Mike. Does it? I'm putting bill for it, so I don't want any, bring anything. Supply. Eleven thirty. Easy, love, we'll have them back for some people, yeah, so I keep it back at eleven thirty. Come on up, talk to guys, uh, big group of guys, uh, getting, um, girls, I'm sorry. Uh, we will be closing office down for our fight, because I think it's right off the staff, just, yeah. Ladies and men here, so. I'm going to eat, hang out in the garage. You got the special, pork steaks, sorry. All those hamburgers, just grab those steaks, my little. I'm gonna tell you what's about, I am going to buy the beef hot dog. Don't want to do it, I said, talk to guys, get home, but she already did, but talk to them. Listen to their concerns they might have, if they have anything. If I want to go to the meeting, it's happy. And that is it. Been busy last week. Need a reminder, yes. But I've got, see your texts, please. I've got hearings.
Text me too.
I don't wanna, listen up, you're paying for something. Are you like? I ain't missing. Three hamburgers and four hot dogs. At least. No bug? No bug. Just my back of me. We are gonna have some beef dishes. Simple things, that's just the way we. Ask, I think the guys are all looking for it, so.
Questions for Craig?
Man, of all days, I cannot be there this, on Wednesday. I would even grill the hamburgers and hot dogs, give everybody a break. So I guarantee you, I can handle that.
I have one grill, I, I got, I got three girls in the house.
Part of the one for Steve. Part of the one for Steve. Oh, it's a big one.
Yeah.
Oh, that's one, I got one of them.
Yeah, you got a big one.
Yeah, I got some. Somebody's got my grill, it's a much bigger. Kids, I love kids, right? I got a call every, every time I need to borrow something, my back, I got a call, I get to say, you have to have this. And, and I got it, but I left my friend for it, and I'm like, well, please get back. Lose all my camping gear, man.
Are you done?
That's it.
Him anything today?
No.
John? Steve? I've had all the conversations with him like you have. All right, Lori, anything for you? Mr. Ross? Good deal, meeting adjourned.